Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the March 11th, 2025 regular meeting of council to order at 5:32 PM. And I'd like to call upon Deputy Mayor Morecki to read the land acknowledgement, please.
I would like to acknowledge that the rural municipality of St. Andrews is located on Treaty 1 territory. This is the lands of the Michinavi, Creed, OG, Creed, Dakota, and Denny people, and the national homeland of the Red River making. In respect for spirit and intent of treaties and treaty making, have remained committed to working in partnership with First Nations, Inuit, and Métis people in the spirit of truth, reconciliation, and collaboration.
Thank you. Next, we have a tribute. On a sad note, I'd like to acknowledge the passing of Jim Stinson on March 2nd. Jim was the RM's Emergency Coordinator for quite a number of years. He was a founding member of MAMAC, an association that gives emergency training to municipalities across the province. He was recognized and awarded many times for his incredible contributions, including the Queen's Diamond Jubilee and Platinum Jubilee medals. He had a gift of understanding spring melts and watching our waterways for possible flooding. Jim was instrumental with flood preparation and mitigation plans, as well as monitoring the water levels and ice breakup on the Red River. He assisted many of our residents over the years who was with both of us, but at one point he worked for Saint Clement's as well. I extend condolences on behalf of council to his wife Darlene, their family, and many friends. So, thank you. Next item is adoption of the agenda. Be resolved that council adopt the agenda amended with the addition of the following items. Item 9.0, Correspondence for Action, FCM Annual Conference, May 29th, June 1st in Ottawa. Addendum. Could I have a mover, please? Councillor Slaker, Secondar. Councillor Dornboss. Any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
That is carried. Now, we'll start with the planning portion of the meeting. Welcome, everyone, to the planning portion of regular. The hearing will proceed as follows. RRPD staff will present the application. The applicant will make a presentation on the application. Those registered in support will speak, and those opposed will speak. The applicant will then have the opportunity to respond to comments or concerns by council or presenters. At the end of each presentation, council may ask for clarification, but will not enter into debate. All persons speaking must address the chair. And at the end of presentations, council will close the public hearing. Once the public hearing is closed, there will be no more presentation accepted on the matter. Council will then consider each matter separately and provide a decision. Thank you. We'll now proceed. First item is condition use. There are none. Variation Order Number 152025.
May we open the public hearing?
Then we do it. Thank you. Be resolved that council hereby open the public hearing for the following planning applications scheduled for March 11th at 5:30. Variation Order Number 152025. Could I have a mover, please? Councillor Dornboss, Secondar, Deputy Mayor Morecki, all in favor?
Aye.
Carry. So that is Veronica or Plan. Could you, while I say, I'm sorry, Katina, please proceed.
Thank you. I'm gonna mute myself.
Yeah, you're good.
Sorry. Okay, so we have a first variance application, view of 15, 2025, located on 114 Dutchel Drive.
I'm sorry, if you may have to speak up. It's hard to hear up here.
Good like that.
Yep.
Yeah. And the purpose of that application is to reduce the required site area for two proposed lot, lot number four and lot number five in AR Agriculture Restricted Zone as a condition of subdivision that been approved before, S212891. And as per zoning by law of St. Andrews, in AR Zone Site Area supposed to be four acres permitted one, and proposed for those two lots, 2 and 3.1 acres respectfully. So here we can see the subject map of AR map of area. And this is a SAM subdivision application law from the applicant with those lot that been proposed. As you see, all the rest of the lots are in compliance, and only lot number five and four are not. Hence the variance. So should council wish to approve this application, either RRPD recommends the following starting conditions. The variance is limited to what has been presented. Any other changes will require new variance approval. And by applicant owner obtain all required permits from the Red River and the RM if required. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Council members, do you have any questions? Bill Schremer, you're here in support. Would you like to speak to the application? Yeah, if you could into the mic, because we're recording, so then it'll be, it's a live recording.
Yes, sir. Good evening. I do support the proposed lot sizes, and especially lot number four, because the church, right from day one, we have the original receipt of Mr. Zellik back in December 13th, 1957, that the church bought two acres of land. And if we get this done properly now, everybody will be on the same page, and the church will have the boundaries in their proper place where our trees will remain, our fowl tower will remain where it should be. So we appreciate everybody's efforts in helping us to come to this conclusion, where the church can carry on the way it always has been for the last 60 something years. So that's why I am in favor of this, because it does bring in line the church property back to where it should have been right from day one. And thank you very much for your help.
Thank you. Council, do you have any questions?
I just want, Mr. Schremer, this is, I believe we went through this once before, a couple of years ago, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah.
About the tree line and the border. So this was something that bothered them once.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Because there was something wrong with the original subdivision or something. The church got.
Well, when, it's very unusual, because we got the original receipt. Thank God that Mr. Zellik's son found it in the box of documents. So we got the original receipt. And from the original receipt to where we are today, nothing seems to line up, except now this is going to bring it back in line. Because the assessment for the property was 1.7 acres. And then the surveyor comes and surveys it. And it's, it's only an acre and a half. Like, we lost all the roads. And where the confusion came in is that the original survey back in when they originally surveyed that, F. They're going back to those pegs. But meanwhile, the road's been expropriated in 1917, 1945, and 1952. So, and it says right in the documents of the certificate that no roads can be included in the title unless the title is to municipality or the crown. Well, the church is not a crown or a municipality, so nobody could have sold us any roads at that time even if they wanted to. So we're getting our two acres back to where it should be, and hopefully, everybody will be on the same page, and we won't have this confusion anymore.
Wonderful.
And I thank you so much for all your help in this thing.
Thank you. Okay. Andrew or Angela Westman, you're here for information. Is there anything you'd like to speak to?
We're just across the street, and they're just curious about the planning. So, no, sorry, we just.
Okay. The gentleman next to you, you came in late. Did you want to?
I'm with Bill.
Under his support.
He's on the church. He's here to support me if there was any problems.
Okay, thank you. So there's no further questions. We'll close the public hearing. Be resolved that the council hereby close the public hearing for March 11th, 2025, planning application. Could I have a mover, please? Councillor Fevelkorn, Secondar, by Councillor Slaker, all in favor?
Aye.
That is carried. Resolution for decision for variation order number 152025. Whereas the applicant owner of tax roll numbers 239650 and 239700 have made application for variation order number 152025 for the premises described as 114 Dutchel Drive. The purpose is to reduce the required site area for two proposed lots, lots four and five in the AR Agricultural Restricted Zone in order to bring the subject property into compliance, subdivision application number S212891. Now, the following, there's two standard conditions attached that were on the screen and explained by the planner. Could I have a mover, please? Councillor Slaker, Secondar. Councillor Dornboss, any further questions or comments? All in favor? All right, that is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we're pretty much done here, then?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're gonna carry on.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming. Next item, 4.6 subdivision, non-public hearing, subdivision number S243085, 416 Clandevoy Road.
One. Do you want to do the resolution? I want a resolution for the, what?
For the subdivision. It's a non-public hearing.
Yeah.
It's resolution. It absolutely needs to be approved.
Oh, yeah, but I've got it to start the hearing.
Oh, no, no. Okay, thank you. Could you please proceed?
Yeah, sure. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So this is subdivision application numbers 243085, located on 416 Clandevoy Road. And the purpose of that application is to create one additional lot on, in Recreation Tourism Zone. Okay, good. So here we can see the air location map of the subject property. The majority of the land is cultivated, and only the farm up to the north is not. Here we can see the SAM of the application. Yeah, it's a little bit weird land piece with a creek. If you saw it before, it actually includes the water. I don't know. That's why you will see a condition from RM to get a buffer from the creek itself. So as per zoning by law of St. Andrews, proposed lot in that area required to be 8 acres and 300 feet width. And those proposed two lots, one of them in compliance, but one as a proposed lot is not by the site area, but yes, for the site width. The residual one is huge, so everything is in compliance there. So our analysis is that proposed lot does not comply with 80 acres side area requirements by the zoning by law, and will require variance in the future to bring it into compliance. And the proposed subdivision application appears to meet, in general, RRPD Development Plan as a retiring pharma intent adheres to the Section 4.1.14.1 by the development plan. So RRPD recommends that application will be approved with the conditions. And the conditions are, by applicant to submit confirmation writing from the municipality that taxes on the land to be subdivided being paid. Payment of any capital development leaves can be made, and payments of administration fees and service deposit requires, as per zoning by law, for the preparation of development agreement and related charges. Charges. And by applicant in order to enter with a, in a development agreement with municipality to address items including, but not limited to, dedication of three 30 meters wide area buffer from a muckle creek, as I mentioned it before. Title includes the water, so we have to go with that buffer. And any other standard deemed necessary by the municipality too. Applicant owner submits confirmation in writing from Manitoba Environment and Climate Change that existing sewage ejector system has been decommissioned or certified exemption has been issued. They can't do that, actually, because they more than 10 acreage lot, so they can still keep that ejector. And by applicant owner to obtain variances for lot size as required. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you, council members. Do you have, anybody have any questions, gentlemen? Councillor, did you have a question?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Councillor Dornboss?
Can I stop so much of the question? It's just maybe a little bit of verbiage here. Under 2.0, where it says site context and background. It says a subject property consists of 153.23 acres on title, and the applicant is seeking to subdivide the subject land into four, one additional lot? Should be just one additional lot?
Should be one additional lot, yeah.
So that is, take that four out?
Yeah.
There's also on the one page, it's in the RMR's increments, should be that's in there.
Oh, wow. Yeah, that happens. On which page is that? It's in a report or in slides?
It was on the screen.
On the screen. Oh, yeah.
There.
Yeah.
The first one.
Yeah. It's the same in increments, so we're good then. Yeah, but it is St. Andrews, yeah. Sorry for that.
So again, sorry, it was good. Councillor Dornboss, hopefully your question?
It wasn't a question, it was a statement. Just some verbiage that wasn't corrected here. Under 2.0, it's, the applicant is seeking to subdivide the subject land into four, one additional lot. It's actually supposed to, which is the title, I think.
Oh, okay.
Should be taken out.
Thank you, but that's not in our resolution, but that's.
In case that pops up.
I just wanted to reiterate some of the conditions as well. I think on the screen, they're a little bit confused with the numbering, but from the municipality, we had three conditions. Confirmation from taxes, of course, and any payments required, capital levies. Number two was a development agreement. It's its own condition. The development agreement's not part of the other conditions, solely for the dedication for the 30 meter wide buffer from the creek. And then that third condition. Actually, that was it. There's just the two. So that third one there is from RRPD.
Okay, yeah, the first one's RRPD. Second one, you're referring to number two on the resolution?
On the screen there, the applicant owner enters into a development agreement. That's its own condition entirely.
Okay.
Separate from the one that was on the previous screen, which is also payment of any capital levies and service deposit amounts.
Okay.
Just wanted to make the distinction.
Thank you. Any further questions by council? Okay, be resolved that subdivision application number S243085 be hereby approved by council to following conditions. Item one, they were all on the screen, read out by the planner, and Braden clarified. So could I have a mover, please?
I'll move it for a second.
Councillor Slaker moved. Councillor Hunt, seconded. Any further comments? All in favor?
Aye.
That is carried. Thank you. That ends the planning portion. Thank you, Valentina. Next item, adoption of minutes. Be resolved that council adopt the March 4th, 2025 special council meeting minutes as presented. Could I have a mover, please? Councillor Fevelkorn, seconded. Councillor Mondor, any errors or omissions? All in favor? Opposed? There are none. That matter is carried. Be resolved that council adopt March 4th. Oh, sorry. Reverse that. I don't know if you know. Be resolved that council adopt the February 25th, 2025 council meeting minutes as presented. Could I have a mover, please? Councillor Dornboss, Secondar. Councillor Mondor, any errors or omissions? All in favor? Carry. Next item is, we don't have any reception of delegates' petitions, bylaws, and policies. Bylaw number 4410 Organizational Bylaw, second reading. Be resolved that council give second reading to bylaw number 4410, being a bylaw to establish organizational structure as amended. Could I have a mover, please? Councillor Slaker, Secondar. Councillor Mondor, comments? Questions?
Yeah, I have a question or comment or observation. I'm not sure which one to call it. Okay, section 99 Board of Revisions. It, what it does is it addresses, or it speaks to the fact that councillors can be on the Board of Revisions. I think we should be either amending this or taking this section out. Currently, what we have is we have three individuals from the RM of St. Andrews who actually sit on the Board of Revisions, so I'm not sure how we could rewrite this to reflect that.
Well, we passed a resolution. It's passed, we appointed three.
That's right, yeah.
Citizen people. This is basically, it will, if one of them is unable to attend or something happens, then a council member can sit in their place. Unless you, you said you have something to add.
Yeah, so if you, if you read it and follow, it's really that council has to point the board regardless of who it is. Council, it says, all of whom may be members of council. Doesn't have to be members of council. So in this case, we're not using members of council, but the board still has to approve, sorry, council still has to approve the board annually.
Okay, again, just the clarification on that.
Yeah, that's.
Should we put that in there? That has to be annually in the.
Well, it's part of the Board of Revision. That's part of that act.
Okay.
That it has to be.
Any further questions, Congress? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I am opposed. Carry. Item 7.2, this is third reading. It's recorded vote. Be resolved that council give third reading to bylaw number 4410, being a bylaw to establish organizational structure as presented. Could I have a mover, please?
So moved.
Councillor Mondor, Secondar. Councillor Hunt, any comments? Oh, Councillor Morecki?
No.
Okay. Any comments? No, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? I'm opposed. That matters carried. Item number 7.4, bylaw number 4411. Utilities charges to taxes for 2024. Second reading. Be resolved that council give second reading to bylaw number 4411, being a bylaw to add the outstanding utility charges to taxes for 2024 as presented. Could I have a mover, please? Councillor Mondor, Secondar. Councillor Dornboss, any comments or questions? Everybody's read the attached. All in favor? That is unanimous. That is carried. Be resolved that council give third reading to bylaw number 4411, being a bylaw to add the outstanding utility charges to taxes for 2024 as presented. Could I have a mover, please? Councillor Slaker, Seconded. Councillor Mondor, this is a recorded vote. Any further comments, questions? All in favor? That matters unanimous. That is carried. 7.5, bylaw number 4412, weed control costs. Be resolved that council give second reading to bylaw number 4412, being a bylaw to add outstanding weed control costs to taxes for 2024 as presented. Could I have a mover, please? Councillor Mondor, Secondar. Councillor Dornboss, everybody's read the attached. Councillor Slaker? You all read the document? You have, Councillor Slaker?
Yeah, I do read the whole agenda when I come.
Oh, but I asked for the record. Get up. So we've got second mover and second, all those in favor? Opposed hearing, then? That is carried. Item 7.6, bylaw 4412, third reading. This is recorded vote. Be resolved that council give third reading to bylaw number 4412, being a bylaw to add outstanding weed control costs to taxes for 2024 as presented. Could I have a mover, please? Councillor Mondor, Secondar. Councillor Fevelkorn, any further comments? Recorded vote. All in favor? Unanimous. That is carried.
We didn't, I know third vote is always recorded, but you didn't record it for the first bylaw that we did. Is that a mandatory thing, or?
It's third, a bylaw, third reading.
It's always.
Automatically.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Thank you.
Approvable accounts, March 7th, check detail report. Be resolved that council approve the March 7th, 2025 check detail report as presented. Could I have a mover, please? Councillor Slaker, Secondar. Deputy Mayor Morecki, any comments? Councillor Slaker?
Just wanted to say that this check layout was fantastic. Thank you very much. Very, very nice new layout that we're getting. And nice to see that the construction is going on at the Matlock Fire Hall for getting showers and stuff out there. Although we had that in the budget, I'm just really happy to see that it's moving forward. So, thank you all.
Any further comments? All in favor? That is unanimous. Carry. Correspondence for action, Gaynor Family Regional Library. Be resolved that Mayor Sewell, Deputy Mayor Morecki, Councillor Dornboss, and Councillor Slaker be authorized to have attended to Gaynor Family Regional Library expansion signing event, which was held on March 4th, 2025 in Selkirk. Could I have a mover, please? Councillor Mondor, Seconder. Councillor Dornboss, all in favor? That's unanimous. That is carried. Manitoba Good Roads Annual Banquet, April 14th in Winnipeg. Be resolved that be authorized to attend the Manitoba Good Roads Annual Banquet and Awards Presentation, being held April 14th in Winnipeg. Who would like to attend? Councillor Morecki, Deputy Mayor Morecki, sorry. Councillor Hunt. Anybody else attending?
Is that the first name of, of?
Yeah, first name.
Okay.
Okay, so be resolved Deputy Mayor Morecki and Councillor Hunt. Could I have a mover, please? Councillor Mondor, seconded by Councillor Slaker, all in favor? Unanimous. That is carried. Item 9.3, Eastern Intra-Lake Candy Van, 2024 Contribution. Whereas the municipality provides as an annual contribution to the Eastern Intra-Lake Candy Van for the services they provide to area residents. And whereas the municipality had a $60,000 in 2024 budget prior to its invoice. And whereas the municipality had received an invoice from the Eastern Intra-Lake Candy Van. And whereas the municipality had received an invoice from the Eastern Interlake Candy Van. For the twenty twenty four annual contribution in the amount of twenty four hundred dollars. Therefore, be resolved that the council of the RMA Saint Andrews authorize the payment of four hundred dollars. To the Eastern Interlake Candy Van for the balance of the twenty twenty four annual contribution. Could I have a mover, please?
So moved.
Counselor Dornboss, seconded by Counselor Hunt, any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
That is unanimous, that is approved. FCN Annual Conference. Be resolved that be authorized to attend the FCN Annual Conference being held May twenty ninth, June first in Ottawa. Who would like to be attending? Counselor Dornboss, Counselor Mondor. Counselor Hunt. Anyone else attending? Thank, could I have a mover, please? Counselor Fueblecorn, seconder. Deputy Mayor Morecki. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, that is carried. I need confirmation, Counselor Hunt. We passed a resolution. Few meetings ago for AMM, April. Fourteen, fifteen.
Although, I, when, when I sent that email, I meant the one in November, that I would forego, the one in November, the annual conference. Because the one in, the one in, in April here, let's see. MSO one, the M squared, A squared conference, actually. Held in coordination with AMM.
You're attending that as well? M squared, A squared?
Yeah, the one in two weeks, which is the Good Roads banquet or three, in the middle of, of April, which is the Good Roads banquet and, and the trade show.
Oh, yeah, but what is the M squared, A squared got to do with this?
It's the same. No, it's this, they, they call it the MSO, whatever is, is, I'm not too sure, but it's, it's in, it's in coordination of that group as, as well.
Oh, that is with our resolution. But there's confusion with Janet Bookett, so, okay, so. You're not going to the November AMM, but you're going to the April one.
Right, which I'm already registered for, and we just, we just passed a resolution for the Good Roads banquet, which is on the first day.
Well, I just needed clarification in light of the email you sent today that you were going, because we're not all registered to go. A while ago, it's a four hundred dollar registration fee for AMM. So we just need clarification if you're going.
Thank you, yeah, I am going to the one in April, thank you.
We have no old unfinished business, new business. Be resolved that the April fourteenth, twenty twenty five committee of the whole meeting be hereby canceled due to a conflict. With the annual AMM Spring Convention. Could I have a mover, please? Counselor Dornboss, seconder. Counselor Mondor, all in favor? That's unanimous, it is carried. We have nothing in camera, no resolutions adjournment. Be resolved that council meeting be adjourned at six, oh, six PM. Could I have a mover, please? Counselor Fueblecorn, seconders. Counselor Mondor. All in favor?
Aye.
That is carried. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.